Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 29th. I mean, I'm sorry, April 25th, 2017, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order. Our meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is also a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under correspondence, we have an emailed letter from Jessica Reyes dated April 9th, 2017. She wrote to the school committee, speaking about school accomplishments in the Long Meadow Public Schools, and making some excellent suggestions to get the word out a little bit more about all the wonderful things we're doing in the Long Meadow Public Schools. So, we really appreciated her letter and her suggestion, and have been discussing that. So, thank you, Jessica. We have approval of minutes. Can somebody please make a motion?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to April 11th, 2017, school committee meeting.
Second.
Any discussion or changes on the minutes from April 11th? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
And abstentions?
I wasn't here.
Thank you. Visitor comments? Do we have any? Sure. This is your big moment. School committee announcements, and business with guests is first on our agenda. So, I will let Superintendent O'Shea take over from here.
Okay. So, annually, the school committee receives a report from our technology department. And so, with us tonight is Technology Director Nick George, and he'll give you an overview of the activities of his department, and give you an opportunity to ask any and all questions you might have. So, he has a brief PowerPoint for us. I'll fire it up for you there.
Thank you for having me.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you for coming, Nick.
Thank you.
So, we got an email with a document. Is it the PowerPoint that you'll be presenting?
Yes.
It's the same thing?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. That was very funny.
So, just a quick overview of the department. We service the school department. We service all town departments. So, it's the sixth school building, central office, and we also service town hall, community house, police department, fire department, public works, Greenwood Center, and stores' library. And we try to partner with the various departments that we support to help them achieve their goals more efficiently and effectively through the use of technology. So, we're not driving the decision necessarily, but based on business needs or based on educational goals, we're there in partnership with them to help them accomplish those goals. And we're also responsible for managing and supporting a lot of the systems that are used on the school side and town side. So, I put examples like our Power School Student Information System, our Munis Financial System, public safety systems like the computer-aided dispatch in the police department, video surveillance systems, phone systems, the systems they use in the police cruisers, and then, of course, things like, you know, school-on-town email and archiving and those kind of things. So, kind of reflecting the nature of those items, we support. This slide shows help requests by location since the start of the fiscal year, July 1, 2016. So, we have so far 4,800 tickets, and that's the breakdown for you. So, the school department is about three-quarters. LHS is the section blue because they have a lot of technology in their building and to the nature of the way they teach, you know, there's more opportunities for us to be of assistance. And the other, pretty much equally sliced-out pieces there are these schools. And then, in the upper-left kind of quadrant, you see district office and the town departments.
What's a typical request from, like, a high school, for instance?
So, the requests could be all over the place, right? So, this chart kind of provides an overview, but it's a very high-level overview. A request might be something as simple as, you know, the projector in my classroom isn't working. What do you mind sending a technician to take a look? Or it could be a project-based ticket, like, the police department says we're working on something where we want to respond more effectively to information requests, and we're looking for a way to do that with the public online. And that might be submitted as a first contact in the form of a ticket.
Got it.
So, we try to have the first contact when someone makes a request, whether it's something small or something large that's a project. We like it to exist as a ticket because that helps us better manage our priorities and make sure nothing slips through the cracks. So, it's kind of, it's the whole spectrum. Some tickets you'll get, and it's something you can fix remote for someone.
Great.
And, you know, so, we are, I didn't produce a report on it, but if there was interest, I could at some point produce a report for how quickly certain tickets are resolved. You can get aging reports and that kind of thing.
Oh, great.
So, it's all over the place. Sometimes you have a ticket that you answer a minute. Sometimes it's a multi-week project or something like that.
Cool. Thank you.
And this is an overview of the number of student devices we have in the district, just to give you kind of an idea. So, we have 1,900, just over 1,900 devices that we use with students. And we broke it down by Chromebooks, iPads, and MacBooks. So, those are mobile devices. There are some exceptions to that kind of standalone lab environments, but those aren't, those don't account for a large number of our devices overall when you look at the big picture. And certainly, Chromebooks, for example, at just about 700 total has been where the largest growth has been for the number of devices that we deploy. We find that those are very effectively used in education, and they're very cost-effective. We can, we've been purchasing Chromebooks most recently at about $200 apiece. And that includes the management software that we use to push out policies and monitoring. And it ties in with the Google Apps for Education system we're already using. So, it's a great way to get a device in a student's hands cost-effectively that's compatible with a lot of the web-based tools they're using nowadays. And we still have a large deployment of MacBooks and iPads out there. And those still, I don't see the, like, iPad count reducing significantly, to be honest, because there are, we found where they're deployed, especially in grades like K through 2, they can be used very effectively, especially if there's specific apps that meet different developmental needs. But, um, where the, those will probably be stagnant, those numbers. We'll be looking at maintaining the number of devices and replacing them as they age out of appropriateness. But we will probably be seeing growth in the Chromebook category because students are, staff in the buildings, the schools are asking for more devices, you know, so that students can get on a device, and there's not so much resource contention when they go to book out a cart. And Chromebooks are a very cost-effective way and a way that works with the tools that they're using to address that need.
Nick, oh, Michelle, and then Michael, you guys go.
That's okay. I just wanted to ask a question about the high school. Are the students choosing to bring their own MacBooks, or do you know, you know, like...
The high school has a bring-your-own-device program. So, they're allowed to bring in, you know, tablets and smartphones and laptops. I don't think you see very many laptops. There are some students who choose to bring them in, but the vast majority of devices you see students bringing in would be smartphone.
And are they using that, you know, instead of the MacBooks in the school?
No, I wouldn't say that because the capabilities are too different, right? And if you have, if you're a teacher and you want to have, you know, if you have a class environment where you want it to be kind of predictable and, not controllable, but you want, you have a certain set of capabilities you need the student to have to accomplish whatever you're going at for that lesson, you're probably still booking out a cart of devices rather than relying on their own device, which could be different capabilities depending on the student, for example.
Okay.
But I think where you find it becoming useful is when you have kind of impromptu uses for technology.
Yes.
Where it's embedded in learning, and maybe you didn't anticipate needing a cart, but, you know, a student looking something up or recording a video of something that you're working on in class, or something along those lines. Those kind of impromptu use cases are what bring-your-own-device does a great job of accommodating.
Okay.
Michael.
How many, I mean, I know that the PTOs specifically have purchased quite a bit of technology, and LEAF as well. Is part of our plan going to be to replace, you know, with our own funding, the technology that they have purchased and replace them with the Chromebooks? Or are we going to kind of go back to the well a little bit and say, hey, you know, we need you to, you know, maybe think about sponsoring this?
Well, we've been very fortunate in the amount of equipment that we've received from very generous donations from LEAF and the PTOs. And recently, we've seen additions in the form of a few Chromebook carts to see, or in an iPad cart that came from donations. So, I don't think that we really treat those devices as something other than what we would have deployed, for example. I think we roll it into our plan of, you know, this device has a four-year lifespan. If four years goes by and it's reaching the end of its life, and we found that it was being used, and it's something, you know, that we want to support, we would attempt to find ways to maintain that level of student access. So, I think what we're aiming for is a certain level of access. And on the, I don't know if I, on this slide, we have our student device ratio breakdown. So, like, overall, if you look at the district, we're at about one and a half students per device.
Which is great, considering the state wants us to be, you know, one-to-one, like, two years ago, and no one's there. So, that's good.
Yeah.
I mean, that's better than most districts. So, as kind of a follow-up, I mean, obviously, we always appreciate the generosity of, you know, these organizations. Do you, I mean, obvious, and we obviously don't always have the funding to be able to support our initiative, so it's helpful. But do you think that that is sort of a practice that we should be continuing to kind of lean on our parent groups to fund these needs? And I'm not asking because, you know, certainly, I know that they obviously get frustrated with that, but also because at some point, we might get told no. And I think that that's more of a dire circumstance when we need it.
Right.
Than simply sort of just saying, hey, you're asking too much.
You can plead the fifth on this one.
No, I mean, like, and is there, is there, you know, kind of, to take that out a step further, is there, are we thinking long-term about how we, you know, potentially fund those needs in an era where there might not be...
I think if you look at the budget that we're going forward with, we looked to increase the number of devices that were end-of-life for students, and we always look to add additional capacity when we can. I wouldn't look a gift horse in the mouth, I guess, for donation. I would have a hard time saying, no, you really shouldn't take this because we should be buying it ourselves. If we can increase student access and they're willing to donate it, I'm grateful, right?
Right.
But, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know if I have a direct answer for you, other than we are looking to increase the level of access for students, and we'll look in, you know, future budgets to increase the number of devices that we can deploy.
That was a good answer.
Yeah.
With the budget that we have now, we're kind of addressing the highest-need devices.
Okay. No, that, I mean, that makes a lot of sense. And you're, in your current budget, you're addressing some of those MacBooks that are kind of ending their life, too.
Well, we're mostly addressing the iPads that are end-of-life.
Okay.
And a few Chromebooks, a few groups of Chromebooks. The iPads that we have deployed are iPad 2s, so those are officially end-of-life by Apple. So, they literally don't receive software updates anymore. A lot of apps that people would want to use for their students aren't even available on them anymore, so that was a clear need. The MacBooks, none of the MacBooks we have deployed are officially end-of-life from Apple.
Okay.
They still receive software updates. It's true that they're getting...
They're about six years old at this point, aren't they?
They're four or five, I was going to say.
Okay.
They've aged pretty gracefully, too. So, there's going to be a judgment call where, I mean, we didn't need the iPad 2 to be officially end-of-life to know that it wasn't working very well in education anymore, that it had gotten to the point where it was slow and kind of disruptive to learning in some cases. The MacBooks, even if they were officially end-of-life, I would say, based on the feedback we get from people, they're still doing the job. They're still able to use them pretty effectively in classes. So, we didn't roll in MacBook replacements into the student device replacement that we have in the budget.
Okay.
But, yeah, you could see in a few years potentially looking at replacing those, that equipment. And that would be equipment where, unlike the iPads, since it's a laptop with a keyboard, a lot of the stuff we do is web-based now, there would be some thought to, do we replace this cart of Chromebook, or cart of MacBooks with more MacBooks, or do we look at getting a Chromebook cart?
Right.
Because we could get it much more cost-effectively.
Yeah, I think at the time, the MacBooks, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it was just like, we got a great deal from Apple on, I think it was like a 0% financing for five years.
Well, those were the teacher devices, but a lot of the MacBooks, when we purchased them, the Chromebooks really weren't in the market yet, so there weren't a lot of options for us.
They've only been the really obvious choice, maybe for the past two and a half years or so.
Right. And so, when we made that decision, it wasn't...
It was probably the best decision at the time. And they've been very effectively used, and still are. But as we look to expand our level of access, we're looking at more cost-effective ways.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. So, just a quick list of some of the current stuff we're working on. We're doing kind of like an internal review of our practices and procedures and configurations because we have so much technology here. We're taking the opportunity to kind of get an overview of it, make sure we're following best practice when it comes to things like level of access and security. That's something that's ongoing, of course, at all times, but we're just taking a close look at it. We're doing a time clock system installation for the Department of Public Works to allow their secretary and their staff to be more efficient in their use of time and tracking when staff arrive and leave, and having a system that will automate more of their processes than what they've been using in the past. Looking at wireless network optimizations, as we add more and more devices, as we've talked about, that's more and more of a strain and a burden on our wireless network. So, it's been very effective at meeting our level of need so far, but there's always opportunities for improvement, and that might not necessarily mean new equipment purchase. It might be opportunities for relocating equipment based on feedback or adjusting our configurations a bit. So, we're looking at our wireless network, especially since we've done computer-based testing and infrastructure trials in some of the buildings to make sure that we have them placed best and configured best to achieve a level of service that's reliable and appropriate for education. FOIA request tracking, we're looking at different systems that might help us better respond to Freedom of Information Act requests, something that would allow us to track electronically when these requests come in, almost like a help-desk ticketing system for the process of responding to these requests so that you aren't running up against deadlines or any requests fall through the cracks, that kind of thing. Equipment deployment, that's always ongoing. So, hopefully, when we are able to purchase equipment to replace student devices that we've identified as being in highest need, that will be a large project over the summer and into the start of school year to get that equipment out and configured and ready for teachers and students to use, as well as our staff equipment replacement. Power School, we've rolled out a new version of the gradebook that Power School's made available. This is a lot of credit to a staff member in my department, Osa Nilson, who is great at working with staff in the buildings to make sure they're up to speed on all the stuff they can do in Power School and helping them work through that process. So, she was integral in rolling out a new gradebook that we're kind of expanding the level of access to teachers as they request it, as there's interest. And it provides kind of a nice, it's an update, from a technical side of it, it works on more devices than the previous version did. It doesn't require Jabba like the old version did. From a practical side, it ties into some other products that Power School may be offering in the future for a more integrated classroom and more integrated assessment tools. And it just provides kind of an easier way for student, for teachers to manage their gradebooks. We've also added easier access for teachers to historical grades, so they can see the grades that students are in their classes currently had in previous years to better inform how they're, you know, customizing teaching to individual students. And we're also exploring tighter integration between Power School with other systems such as Naviance and TyNet. TyNet being the pupil services system that we migrated over to about a year ago. I think overall, we've been really happy with that migration. A lot of credit goes to pupil services staff and Osa Nilson for navigating that whole process. But one of the tighter integrations, for example, is that staff can now see in their Power School gradebook, which they use on a daily basis for attendance, they'll see easy notifications if a teacher is on like a 504 or an IEP, whereas before it was in a separate system. So, that's, there's still paper-based components to that, but that's an example of that tighter integration that we hope makes data more easily available to staff to help them better inform what they do throughout the day. And then, Naviance is the system that the high school uses for kind of navigating college application processes for students, and there's opportunities to maybe tie that in more closely to the parent component of the Power School portal. Computer-based testing, we did MCAS computer-based testing recently, following a lot of planning ahead of that and some infrastructure trial that we did in the schools to make sure that our network and our equipment was up to the task, and it went off pretty well. We didn't hear too many technical issues from people, and when we did hear technical issues, there was equipment that had been set aside for the purpose of swapping it out quickly to make sure that the student wasn't impacted or disrupted. So, that went pretty well. And there's also the development of a new technology plan. Our previous technology plan is up, so it's time for a new one. And I'll be working with the tech committee, which I'll talk about in a little bit on that, and, okay?
We'll talk about it.
Nick, can you give us a little bit more, I'm curious about the computer-based testing bullet point?
Sure. So, I was mentioning specifically MCAS computer-based testing.
So, that was fourth grade and the eighth grade.
Was it third and eighth, or fourth and eighth?
Fourth.
Fourth and eighth, yeah.
And this is the first year we used computers?
Yes.
For the MCAS. And there were Chromebooks that were used only? And what was your, I mean, were the Chromebooks were okay? They were sufficient?
Yeah.
Is that what school districts are primarily using?
I think Chromebook, if you look at what school districts are deploying today, if they're making decisions today, they're deploying Chromebooks. You might see some schools that had made decisions in previous years to do a large iPad deployment that have a lot of capital, or not, they put a lot of effort into rolling out the professional development and everything that goes along with an iPad deployment. And so, those are the devices they have, and that's what they used for testing. But the Chromebooks were particularly well-suited. If you use a tablet like the iPad, for example, you have to buy a keyboard to go along with it.
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah. So, we found the Chromebooks, they didn't require any additional hardware, or there was no purchase we needed to make on top of it to make them compatible or suitable. They were already out of the box. Like I said, with the devices that we buy for $200 that come with that management component, we're able to use that management side to push out the testing environment to all the devices, so they had a consistent platform to test on. When the students enter into the test, it's a locked-down environment. They can't leave or go anywhere else or browse the web. It's strictly the confines of what the test allows. And they're just, they're simple devices, they get good battery life, and they're inexpensive enough that we have an extra one on the cart, you know, when you have a class taking the test. If one of them doesn't work for some reason, you can grab the other one, and the nature of Chromebooks is you can continue where you left off. So, I think it went pretty well. The feedback that we got from the principals was that there weren't many technical problems at all.
That's great. You answered all my questions. That was fantastic.
Right.
That was very informative. Thank you. I was, I was really eager to hear how that was going to go because we were, you know, we're talking about it, and Marty and I and Tom raised it in the finance committee meeting as, you know, a big technology, as being a financial issue that's really on the horizon, especially with regard to testing, it being tied into testing. So, it's been a point of conversation.
And Nick's technical expertise was supplemented by his ability to calm people's fears and anxieties associated with computer-based testing.
Yeah.
So, he, he helped us take a deep breath and approach it thoughtfully.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, you have a great personality for that.
Well, thank you. And there was a lot of effort, I should say, on the part of the staff in the building, the principals, the tech teachers, they really went through it in advance. They were showing the students in the test, there was a test environment available before the test, so you could familiarize the student with the tools. And then, all of the schools participated entirely in the infrastructure trials so that we had the same number of students doing a sample test in advance of the actual testing, so we knew exactly what that environment would look like.
Great.
So, they definitely put the time in to make sure it went well, and I think it paid off.
That's great.
Yeah. For some future projects, update of core servers and supporting infrastructure, there's a capital request to replace some of our kind of core server infrastructure that's responsible for hosting a lot of those systems I mentioned earlier, Power School, the Munis Financial System, those kind of things. We're at the point where the one that we're using is kind of at capacity. We don't have much room to grow, and if we were to continue using it at the rate we're using it, we would see a reduced level of redundancy. So, this is kind of a preventative measure to make sure that you're not going to run into a situation where you have a disruption of service because some equipment has failed. We also have built into the budget an increase of internet bandwidth from 500 megabits per second to a gigabit per second. So, that's an internet connection that's shared across the schools and the towns. So, that's used by all school departments, it's used by stores' libraries, it's used by the town, and we're just hoping to stay ahead of the curve of where we see our utilization. So, we could probably get by maybe a little bit longer at the amount we have now, but we're seeing really rapid growth in the amount of stuff that people do online and the amount of bandwidth that they consume. And we want to take care of it before it gets to the point of people finding out that stuff doesn't work. So, upgrading to a gigabit of internet bandwidth would really put us in a good position to be confident that we had sufficient internet access to ensure that it wasn't disruptive in the classroom, that stuff worked, that they weren't waiting for stuff to load, that they can continue integrating more multimedia aspects of what they can get online or with electronic textbooks into their teaching. And of course, we talked about it a little bit, replacement of end-of-life school staff and student devices. So, that's built into the budget, the, that was built in the old budget for staff devices, where we were going to enter into a new lease with Apple in order to purchase new staff equipment. The staff devices are in as much of a need, if not more, than the student devices for replacement. They have been very patient with the equipment that they're issued. It's, I mean, we're fortunate to have it, of course, but if you see a staff member using the machine, they are exercising a lot of patience based on the age of the machine and the performance they're seeing from it. So, it's, it'll be great to get that equipment replaced. And then, the student devices, like we said, we identified the highest-need devices, iPads that were end-of-life, and some Chromebook carts. Another potential future project would be replacement of end-of-life town staff devices, subject to funding, of course. We have, the town staff devices in a lot of cases were actually devices that were moved over from the school system when the school system got new equipment. So, we're seeing a lot of five- or six-year-old Dell desktops and HP laptops that are not really suitable for continued usage, so we're looking to get those replaced. And lastly, this is kind of a broad umbrella, but developing and leveraging of regional partnerships. We're working, on the town side, we're working on opportunities for regional dispatch for police departments, so that's something that we're, I'm working on right now with a few neighboring communities. Off-site backup and redundancy with neighboring communities. We already have a fiber line that we meet over with East Long Meadow, so there is not a ton of equipment that we need to be put in place in order to light up that connection and start taking advantage of it. We actually applied to a communities, a compact community grant about a month ago for the equipment that would be necessary to get that connection lit up. So, we haven't heard yet if that, if we were fortunate enough to be awarded that grant, but if we were, we could potentially look at a partnership with East Long Meadow where we could have some redundant or backup equipment located in a data center at their location, and they could do the same for us, so that we have a little bit more geographic diversity in the event that you had some sort of natural disaster, or fire, or flood, or something like that. You want your data stored offsite, and that would allow us to do it very cost-effectively. And it would also provide potentially multiple paths to internet providers. The broader we can extend our reach as far as our fiber internet connectivity, the more opportunities that gives us to look at more cost-effective ways of getting bulk internet provider, or internet service from a provider. This, I think you're all pretty familiar with this. That was just to kind of dovetail off of the last slide. Those are the devices we identified as the highest-need of replacement for student devices. So, 384 iPad 2s, and 96 higher Chromebooks, and 80 Samsung Chromebooks, and also some devices, I forgot to mention, sorry, on the previous slide, and computing, which are kind of thin-client computers, that were very effective and, like the MacBooks, the obvious decision at the time, but we're six years down the road, and they're not kind of keeping up with what we expect of devices in the classroom today. So, we've slated those for replacement with additional Chromebooks. Computer lease warrant article, just to bring to your attention, I'm sure you're already aware of it, but the Municipal Modernization Act requires us to go to town meeting in order for us to be authorized as a department and to enter, to enter into a debt obligation on behalf of the town. So, this isn't to enter into new debt. We already had $100,000 in our budget for the five-year, or the four-year lease now for staff devices, but we need to go to town meeting in order to request entering into that multi-year agreement. So, that's Article 17 on the town meeting on May 9th, and...
So, Nick, would it be accurate to say that this is necessary to fill the budget that the school committee voted on?
Yes. That's exactly right. School Technology Committee, we have formed a school technology committee. It's only, it was formed, I think, in December. We've met a couple times so far, and we're planning another meeting soon. And it consists of teachers, administrators, and a few community members. And the goal is to have them review and implement new and propose, review the implementation of new and proposed technology initiatives, so they can kind of function as a sounding board for the things that we're talking about rolling out in the district as a way for us to get feedback from them. And I'm communicating their feedback to the professional, or to the administrative team. We hear from them about what they consider, you know, what they would like to see for professional development. We get feedback from them on hardware and software deployments and technology-related policies that we're proposing. So they are really a valuable tool. A lot of the discussion recently with them is kind of centered around one-to-one and what a one-to-one deployment would look like, what it looks like from a teacher's perspective, what neighboring communities have already implemented it, and what it takes to roll out a successful one-to-one initiative. So we're still kind of in early talks about that, but that's something that we've kind of naturally gravitated to, is something that teachers are interested in. We've certainly heard from them that they would see value in a one-to-one deployment if it was done effectively with the necessary professional development in order to support the usage in the classroom. So there does seem to be some interest there, so we look to continue that discussion.
Michael.
So a little unrelated to the school technology committee, has there been any progress in constituting the Technology Advisory Board? Or is that sort of like just a dead thing that is like in the charter but doesn't matter at this point?
I, I'm not sure that there has been any progress towards changing the way that committee has functioned.
I mean, I don't, I don't think it's ever functioned, honestly. I think they had two meetings and then they never reorganized themselves.
I don't know that they ever had an official meeting. I think there were a couple attempts and they struggled getting a quorum multiple times, and so after that, they struggled having membership. And so I don't think that the current structure is going to be something that's going to work successfully to address what the plan was in terms of the administrative code.
So, and I guess just for everyone else's education, when the administrative code, which consolidated the school and town IT departments into the school department, was adopted by the Select Board in 2010 slash 11, part of the requirement in the charter was that there is a Technology Advisory Board that is jointly appointed by the school committee and the Select Board. It's an advisory board constituted by IT professionals who can be essentially that same sounding board, but for town meeting and for town-wide deployment of technology. At the time, I was the chairman and Paul C. Antonello was the chairman, and we got them organized with one or two meetings. We helped them elect a chairperson, vice-chairperson, a clerk. Kevin Waranda at the time met with them in his role. And the following year, their chairperson had yet to call meetings. Marie Angelides and I sent him a letter essentially saying, "Form a meeting or we're going to disband the board and reorganize it ourselves." And I think that since then, it's just become defunct. I think everybody's turned out. And I think it's a board that probably provides some pretty valuable resources to you. And also as a, you know, technology has always been a sticking point at town meeting, especially large purchases of technology. And, you know, to have industry professionals talk about why this is important at town meeting, I think is a really valuable asset. And so, you know, I would ask the chair if she could communicate with the chair of the Select Board.
I agree with you.
Okay, good. And she'll know exactly what we're talking about, because she was the chair last time that that came up, to see if we can get it reconstituted, because we're supposed to. It's in charter, and I think it's a lost opportunity if we don't have it.
Helpful, really helpful.
Thank you.
I agree.
Yeah.
Just trying to help, Nick.
To echo what you said, I totally could see the value in the committee that met and provided that.
I know it's one more meeting for you to go to, but, sorry.
That's okay. And lastly, I just wanted to end it on our TIES Technology and Education Showcase with a thank you to Sandy Boudreaux, the TIES Committee, and all the staff, students, and community members who participated. We had a great turnout. I think the head count, I mean, there wasn't an official head count, but I think we were talking like 1,400 people. People were parking over at Williams and walking over, and it was a really great showcase of some of the stuff that goes on in the classroom. It was certainly, I enjoyed going around and seeing the stuff that was going on. There were some great presentations, students, it was very much student-driven. The staff were there to provide support, but it was great to see the students kind of leading the discussion and showing, they were very excited to show what they do in the class. So if you were, if you had a chance to be there, I'm sure you were likewise had a good time and hopefully impressed and won't be doing it next year, because I've heard from a lot of people that it was a lot of effort to put into it, and they could use a break for a year. So we did a one-year break from the last one. This was my first one to be lucky enough to participate in, and it was, it was a lot of fun, so I hope you had a chance to visit.
And nice logo.
Yeah.
Nick, I don't want to put you on the spot with this question, so we can definitely talk about it some other time, but I'm just curious in terms of, I'm always thinking about long-term planning, you know, with the town. It's always difficult because of turnover that we have with committees. With technology, in terms of Chromebooks versus products, I'm hearing that the Chromebooks are working for people and, you know, it's from an investment standpoint, it's not necessarily one is better than the other. I guess I think about it in terms of sort of the terms that you laid out. You can, you can purchase more Chromebooks and have more backup, but then for that quantity, would we do better with the quality, you know, in the other direction? Those are the sorts of things that go through my mind as a school committee member and as someone who's not an expert in technology.
Sure. I would say it's a matter of using the right tool for the job. So a MacBook, I wouldn't say is a higher-quality device. I would say it's a different device with different capabilities.
I mean, my assumption is that it's a lower-quality device than an iPad or a...
I, I don't know if quality is the right word, because I think it really depends on what the use case is. So if, for example, a MacBook Pro may be a very quality machine, but if you walk into a classroom and you see students using 25 MacBooks at $1,000 apiece, and they're just using it to go online and use Google Drive, and then that's a wasted opportunity.
That makes sense, yep.
Right. So what we look to do is to buy the most cost-effective tool to the job. And in some cases, that's going to enable us to buy higher-end equipment where that need does exist. In other words, maybe we do continue buying a cart of MacBooks, and maybe they're higher quality and more capable than we would have bought otherwise if it was what we were deploying as a general device, because maybe that cart is going to be specifically used for video editing and some science software and those kind of things.
That makes sense.
But, right. But if you put a Chromebook next to a MacBook, and you're both going online and doing the same thing, and you're not relying on software that you need the Mac for, the experience is very similar. The other thing I would say about Chromebooks is they've achieved a lot of momentum in education. They, I, I don't, I'm not going to...
You were mentioning that there.
They have a ton of momentum, so I don't want to throw a number out there and have it be misleading, so I won't. But they are, I know they're, they're at least the majority of computer purchases in Massachusetts over the past year for schools was for Chromebooks. I think the percentage was pretty impressive, but I don't remember exactly, so I'll just say majority. So when you see a product achieve that kind of momentum, then you start seeing a lot of educational companies tailoring their products to meet that device. So when we sign up for new software, it's not uncommon for them to say, "Oh, and by the way, it works just as good on MacBook or Chromebooks as it works on anything else," because they're designing it to that target environment now.
That's good to know.
So I think it's, yeah, it's a device that has a lot of momentum, especially in education, and it really allows us to spend our money elsewhere if there is, if there is a need that a Chromebook doesn't meet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to thank and acknowledge Nick's efforts. He's a great resource for all of us, and you can see that he's juggling a lot, and he juggles it very, very effectively. And you can think at the organization level, but he also is really effective at thinking at the user level, and so we appreciate everything he does for us. And he's got a great team of people behind him. And after what you said about the TIES event, it was a booming success. A lot of, lot of great people working on some great events, so.
Yeah, it's a very good team that I work with, to be honest. They're very service-driven, so I think you'll hear from a lot of people, especially if they happen to work with people in other districts, that they really like working with our support staff. It's a, there is definitely a service-driven kind of mindset where they're there to help the staff and the students, and it works out really well for everybody.
Yeah, you guys work really hard, and you don't get that sort of public acknowledgement as much as, you know, I'd love for you to have, but, you know...
No, I thank, thank you for having me and thanks for what you said.
Really appreciate all, all of the work and information you provide. You're always very accessible, and like Superintendent O'Shea mentioned, your personality is so well-suited with regard to, you know, technology issues and staying calm and staying the course in terms of troubleshooting. Really appreciate the great job you do, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming, Nick.
Thanks for putting me first. I wasn't expecting that.
Everyone gets lucky every once in a while.
Do you want to stay for our whole meeting?
Yeah, you can stay.
Sure. Sure. So we have, next on your agenda is an update on recess and movement. And so as I'm introducing this, our, there are two middle school principals, Teller Rai and Cole Allen can come on up. So there are three parallel paths that we're on here with regard to recess and movement. And recess and movement in general have gotten a lot of attention, and I am increasingly thinking that Long Meadow is becoming a leader in this area. I see some great progress around our commitment to making sure that learners have opportunities to be active. There's definitely an interest in expanding access to recess as well. And so the three parallel paths that we're on, the first one involves a team that Sue heads up, the wellness team. And the wellness team has put together a set of best practices relating to promoting movement and activity in the classroom in a way that promotes learning. And so in your packet, there is a kind of a working draft of a best practices document that Sue's wellness team has put together. And if it's okay, I'd love for Sue to maybe explain that document a little bit further, where it came from and where we might go with it, because, you know, at the heart of all this is learning, right? I mean, it's not just activity and movement for activity and movement's sake, but it's activity and movement to promote learning. So I appreciate the work of the wellness team, and if you don't mind, if Sue can give us a couple minutes on that.
Sure. So there are two wellness teams, right? Because Tom does a security wellness team, so we call ourselves the W Team affectionately. And we have over 30 members, and every time I send out a notice that we're having a meeting, I inevitably get four or five emails saying, "Can I join that committee?" So it's a huge committee of really dedicated people who are really interested in kind of those non-academic indicators of success at school. So the first thing we tackled was recess and movement as a committee, and we went in and lots of folks knew nothing, so we did really a study on it. And we looked at a ton of research and, you know, in particular, the Academy of Pediatrics had a statement that came out a little while ago, well, it was quite a while ago now, and looked at their recommendations and the CDC's recommendations, and we looked at all kinds of educational studies, and then we looked at movement in the classroom along with recess, and we had an occupational therapist come in. And you were here that day, right, Liz? She brought in, you know, just had the whole clap spout over there lined up with fidget toys and sensory toys. And I brought my yoga chair I use in my office, but it's, this is a one with a base, so we have a lot of these in classrooms around, and kids use them with a base and they use them without the base for even more stability. There's several different varieties of that, but that, that's one of the, the things that's working. I figured I would give it a shot, because I'm up and down a lot if I, you know, and it's, it's been great. I've gotten laughed at a lot, but it's been great, and I almost fell off once.
By not in this room, right.
Yeah. Just in this room.
So how do those work? What's the philosophy behind?
So you're always getting, you're always getting input, sensory input from that. You're always trying to, needing to adjust where, you know, how you're sitting in it. So it keeps you, keeps you balanced, it's good for your posture. You know, you're doing things that, appropriately, that keep kind of focused on work. So, yeah, feel free to give it a shot.
There you go.
Yeah.
So in the classroom?
Yeah.
It, it sort of helps in terms of application, at classroom application?
Definitely, yeah. And if you look at the research, you know, they'll tell you, they'll, everything says that, you know, the positivities of movement in the classroom and that kind of, getting that kind of environmental feedback. So if you're sitting in your plain old, you know, plastic desk chair, you might move because you're, you know, you're achy from sitting in one seat, but this is, you'll say, it really gives you some good feedback for your body, it keeps you straight and aligned, and so it's great. And there are a lot of tools like this that do the same or similar things, and there's, you know, tools, fidget toys, and we were talking about the fidget cube. I think it came off a Shark Tank, and I think they can't keep them on those shelves in Killywings, but they have a little, they're, they're literally a cube. Kathy's probably vouched for them in her class, and they have, each, each side of the cube has a little activity, a switch, an up-and-down button, a little roller ball. So kids are using them to keep their, you know, keep their hands busy while they're focusing and paying attention to the teacher. I think they're a little loud.
Yes.
This is sort of a counterintuitive subject that we're really starting to see mainstream in schools, which is fascinating to me, that if a child is doing something else, it actually is helping that child to concentrate on what's being said, even though that eye contact isn't being made between the student and the teacher.
It's pretty fascinating.
That's really fascinating.
We've known that in special education for a long time, but it hasn't really hit the, hit mainstream. Well, it's hitting.
Which is fantastic.
Yeah. And teachers have been amazing about having all these things in the classroom, and they, you know, they have fair vans on their, their seats, so they're, they can get some feedback from, from that. They have pedal desks at center, and they have standing desks, and so one of the recommendations is actually to attempt to use some end-of-year funds to get some more of those sensory tools into schools. So we are, we have an inventory, we're taking inventory and looking at requests, and then we'll have our occupational therapists look at our requests to make sure they're appropriate and make other recommendations if necessary. So we're really hoping for that. Let's see. So we developed a draft document, and I think you have a copy of it, and it's got lots of recommendations and suggestions. We actually had to postpone our last meeting because we were right in the middle of MCAS, and teachers were freaking out about, you know, MCAS. So we postponed it, we'll meet again shortly, and just shore up that list of recommendations and get it out to teachers. We'll share it in a Google Doc, but we'll also probably ask folks on the wellness committee to present at faculty meetings on some of those things. One of the things you can look at yourselves is called gonoodle.com, and they're just quick little stretch videos or movement videos that you can do at the start of class or the middle of class. And the high school teachers who are on the wellness team are actually using them at high school. They're pretty silly, and the feedback from them is that the kids love them. So that, that's great. And our next goal is to work on or take a look at stress and anxiety. We'll probably use the same process. We'll probably go in, assuming we know nothing about it, and do a lot of research on it, and look at a lot of articles, and maybe see some video on it, and come back again with some recommendations regarding dealing with stress and anxiety for students in the classroom, so.
So it's sort of, you know, I credit Sue for heading up that team and for identifying some best practice in this area. And then just to underscore what Sue said, to take that document now and share it out to the whole district, so you can kind of build that momentum and build that culture around it. And so we're excited to take the next step. It's, it's only sort of a working draft at this point, and I think they got to take another shot at finalizing it, so. So that's kind of one path we're going down. And then the other path relates to what Sue said, is looking at picking up more equipment and furniture that can promote active learning. And so as Sue said, we're doing an inventory of sort of what we currently have in this area. And then we'd like to come back to you before the close of this year with some recommendations for things that we would pick up to get into classrooms for the end of the year. Potentially, if not, it would be in place at the beginning of next year. But, you know, the yoga ball being a good illustration of the value of these types of pieces of equipment, so. So we're excited about it. So that's, those are the two paths, and we can stop there before we get into the third path.
Just I forgot to mention, so next year, I think one of the kind of goals between all of the schools was looking at, you know, the whole child wellness, and I think, so we'll be able to have a more in-depth training in the sensory input and the movement piece in the classroom within that.
Stephanie. So we talk about, you know, recognizing importance of movement in the classroom, and we're talking about recess. Where, has it been discussed about homework being used as a punishment in that practice and where we stand on that?
I think Donna Hutton is heading up the homework committee, and...
You mean recess being used as punishment?
I mean, did I say it? Sorry.
I thought recess being used as punishment.
Homework was always a punishment.
Sorry. Apparently it wasn't correct. Recession being used as punishment, yes, sorry.
Can I throw on, so...
We're starting to think about both things.
Right.
So at May 20, May 23 meeting, Donna Hutton will bring the team of teachers that has been working on our guiding principles related to homework, and so we could, I could ask her to address that at that meeting. I would...
Well, she's talking about recess.
Okay, yes. I've got both on my minds. I clearly said it incorrectly. I'm talking about taking recess away as punishment.
In regard to recess, I would say I agree with you. I don't think that, and I'll say it publicly, I've said it in other forums, I don't think that recess generally should be used as a punishment. Now, there are times, though, where you want the discipline to match the infraction, so if a child is potentially misbehaving at recess, then you might have to have some, you know, restrictions on that child during recess. So I would agree that in general, we've talked about it as administrative team, that we really want to avoid that, but there are exceptions to that. And I'd say, to any parents watching, if you have concerns about how that, if that's happening, or how it's happening, that please, please, you know, be in touch with your school administrators, or me frankly, because it is something we, we do want, if that has been the practice, and it is something that we want to pay attention to, so.
Glad we clarified. However, I have no idea how I said it in the first round, but I have both things on my mind.
Are we looking at, with regard to that sort of component to recess, are we going to integrate that into some sort of district-wide philosophy? Or how is that streamlined in terms of all of the schools and, and communication? Because I know this year, we're talking a lot about equity and consistency and trying to have good communication, so that it's different schools are...
Yeah, I mean, I can only tell you that we've talked about it probably three times this year at our administrative team meetings. And I think there is some general agreement on how we approach recess and those circumstances when it might be a disciplinary situation. I don't know that, it's one of those areas that, you know, if you look for a policy on it or something, you know, we could take a shot at trying to pin that down. But for me, you know, just generally speaking, any recess restrictions ought to relate to recess behavior. Exceptions being situations where parents might want or ask even for a child to sit with a teacher during recess or, you know, so there are exceptions to it that are sometimes hard to pin down. But we could take a shot at trying to codify that if that's, if that would be helpful.
I don't, don't, oh, me. Don't quote me, but I think in our wellness policy that we developed back a while ago has recommendations surrounding recess and the not to move recess for consequences.
In normal circumstances.
In normal circumstances, so.
I do, I do know it has been used at the elementary level recess as a sort of, what's the word I'm looking for?
Punishment?
Yeah, but there is a...
Consequence.
Consequence for homework.
Okay.
I know that for a fact.
Yeah, we should, you should let us know about that. Our parents should let us know about that.
Absolutely. And I, that's why I brought it up. I think it's something...
But are the teachers having the kids do the homework during recess? Is that the idea?
Mm-hmm. It has been in the past.
Yeah.
I don't know current practices, but I can speak to the past.
Those are things that ought to be discussed between classroom teacher and parent, you know, that generally speaking, we ought to adhere to the policy that Sue's talking about.
So do you want me to read?
But if there are...
The policy says, "Schools will discourage withholding of recess as a form of discipline or punishment." So sometimes I just need to refresh teacher's memory on that.
So if that's a, if that's a policy that we're not adhering to, then that's, we need to know about that.
Where was this policy when I was in elementary school?
Yeah, I thank you for bringing that up because I think both topics that you, one that you meant to bring up and the one you mistakenly brought up, both are very important, which is, I think a lot of organizations have come out speaking about the issue of recess as a punishment and also with regard to connection between homework and recess. So does anyone else have anything on that before we move on?
So the third path that we're headed down is taking a look initially at least at middle school recess. And so we are almost approaching that time of year when schools are developing their schedules for next year. So it's usually probably early May, middle of May, even into June when the principals are starting to pin down their, their schedules and rotations and things for next year. And so with that in mind, Taylor and Nicole are here to talk to you about what they might be able to do with regard to recess at the middle school level next year. Just a couple of disclaimers and, you know, one, we've talked about this before, is that we do run into, there are limitations into how much we can offer. Some relating to contract, some relating to supervision, some relating to time on learning, some relating to other things that we're trying to work into the school day. So, you know, it's a, it's a finite pie. The school day is a finite pie. And so if we are able to expand access to recess, then, you know, we need to understand what the gives and the takes are with that. So I think Taylor and Nicole have some sort of general directional thoughts on where they might be able to go with this in the, in the coming year.
So.
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 So. So, I mean, the discussions are ongoing with staff members and really just the where and when it can take place. And the big thing comes down to staffing and supervision. It's an ongoing discussion, but I think for the most part, the staff is generally, teachers are generally in favor of the idea of recess and movement in the classroom. We do have a lot of teachers, I can speak for Williams, I'm pretty sure at Glenn Brook too, that promote movement in the classroom and active learning. I mean, the benefits are just, are there. So it is a process. We definitely share that vision and getting there. There's a few things that we need to answer and hopefully in the future we'll be able to have definitive answers for you.
Yeah, I would say the same thing that Marty was saying with the contracts, schedules, time on learning and supervision is, those are the kind of like roadblocks that we have to figure out because I think all of us agree that it is important to have recess at the seventh and eighth grade level. It's just how is that going to fit in? And working with the teachers and I think after MCAS season is over, we'll be able to spend more time on that. Right now, there's a lot of that going on, a lot of meetings. So I think once that's over and we start to look at our schedule, we could, our plan is to have sort of a committee that we have an eighth grade and seventh grade rep on, on this committee so we can kind of plan something out and how it would look like for us. You know, the question is whether it has to be daily or not. And, you know, we looked at, you know, maybe three out of the six days and if we use some of this time and that time. So it just takes us, you know, like we said, I think it's there and everyone agrees that it's important to have it. We just are trying to figure out how to fit it in with all those roadblocks as well as how often do we need to have it for the length, so.
So roughly, to reiterate sort of that three out of, so you have six day rotations at each of your schools and so given some of what you're up like three days might be a target for you in terms of the amount of...
Right, right.
And the other, the other thought being too, to sort of add to that, kind of using advisory time to get outside is, I think that's another huge opportunity that we could take advantage of.
Which would be almost like having a fourth day.
Right.
And the students and I can speak at Williams are outside on the nice days when it's outside doing team building activities. Some are starting to utilize the courtyard, which is great, and then also in the side field at Williams as well.
Russ?
So one piece to this equation, potentially, and we should have an executive session at some point in an upcoming meeting, start talking about the teacher contract and negotiations and what we're going to ask for. So there's the parameters of what the schedule looks like now, and then there's a question, I think, for the committee about, you know, are we going to look to try and have a little bit longer day so that we can squeeze some of these other things in? Science at the elementary level too was another thing we talked about, maybe not having a time on for, but obviously time is money, so that's something we'd have to look at. I think as a committee, we need to determine, is that a priority in negotiations too or not? So, because you're working with the parameters we have now, but possibly that could change subject to negotiations and everything.
Michelle?
So I had, when Stephanie sent around, I think we all got it, I don't know if you got the email about strategies for recess in school from the CDC and the Shape America? She sent it.
I think just for the community and...
Do you remember? Oh, okay. So I'll shoot it...
When did that go out?
Over to, probably a month and a half ago.
Okay.
Wasn't recent. But they had some, you know, many strategies and I think it was a great, you know, outline for how we can integrate it. But one thing they suggested was really trying to engage volunteers and that sort of thing. This document, and I'll make sure that you guys have it, it goes through step by step how people kind of have, have built it into the day, middle school and high school. But anyhow, so engaging the community and then I'd like to say as a board, I think, you know, we're gonna, I think it's important to go buy, you know, not paraphernalia for the classroom, but I'm really enjoying this, but on top of that, you know, something that's easy outside. If we can support that financially through, you know, aids or something during the school day, I think we should pay attention to that as well for the end of year, not end of year funds, but just in terms of working that into our budget. Because I certainly support buying the devices and everything to help, but just going outside, there's nothing like it. So I guess, I think what I'm hearing is you still need to get back to us on, on how you can deliver this.
Yeah, we have yet to create a schedule that works or we have to have a committee, we have to, it's just going to take some time to do that, so, to do it right, so.
And it's, you know, I hope it doesn't, I'm sure it feels like, well, when are we going to find out? But part of it is that it's just, this is that time of year when you're developing a schedule for the coming academic year and, you know, so staffing and programming and all that is kind of set, which, you know, if we're at that stage, you could take a look at, you could take a look at schedules and come back with, because it has to fit in with everything else, you know, how much advisory time and how much passing time and how much lunchtime. And there's discussions with food service and there's discussions with, with teachers and there's so many. But that CDC document I'm sure will be helpful to us in terms of figuring out some creative ways to incorporate it.
Could you guys share that with us?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay, it's fine.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'll get it over to you. But, you know, do you think it's fair to say then, with all of the work that has to be done, that we could try to integrate recess in some way, shape or form, whether it be three days out of the six or something into next year? You know, so that we're not looking, because as you're developing the schedule, if it gets crazy, you know, I think I'd like to see us make that a priority so that next year it's in place and we're not working on it for a whole nother year. And then the contracts are changing, let's say, or something. So do you think you could come up with like a pilot program for next year or something? Is that a reasonable?
I think that's what exactly, Michelle just read my mind, what I was going to ask because we, I know we started the discussion at the beginning of the year and there definitely was a lot of pressure in terms of, you know, it's not something we can get together for this year. And I do think there was a hope that we could have something in place for next year. So just to echo Michelle's question, do you think that's reasonable to have something in place at least?
I would say as best we can, yes. Like I said, there's stuff as far as like agreements that we don't have control of that we would need to, you know, that kind of stuff.
Of course.
So I think reasonably, if we're trying to think of doing three out of six days, then, you know, we are going to do our best to try and make that work out to start in the fall. You know, that's our plan.
So you do think that's a reasonable...
I don't want to say like I promise.
No, I'm not asking you, but you think it's a reasonable...
Yeah, and that's why three out of six is probably more reasonable where I think we'd get, we can maybe do a little bit with having it not be every single day.
Okay.
It's still going to be difficult to sort of figure this out, but more reasonable would be able to do, do this and see how that works and then maybe down the line have it be something that can be a little more. But again, the supervision and how that's going to work. Because right now, like I said, if we're gonna, if we utilize it like off of lunchtime, then there's only one of us down there at lunch. So if we open the door or kids go out and come in, there's only one of us down there right now because teachers don't have a duty anymore, so.
That was on my list of questions was lunch.
Yeah. So it just, it's just, it's going to take us trying to work out how that, that'll play out, minute here, minute there, so.
Because the opportunity cost, you're potentially skimming a little bit off of advisory, maybe a little bit off your passing time, a little bit off of lunch. I mean, this is how, you know, this is how they approach it, I think. I haven't scheduled the middle school.
Passing time, we can't do at Glenn Brook. Take one minute to get to class. That's going to be a nightmare.
But just, I guess my point is like financially, if we can, if we can support what you need to at least get, you know, monitors available so that they're not taking from teachers or, you know.
I think once we have the time to put this together, what we might do is put it together and then say like, these are the three or four things we may need from you guys for this actually, kind of a thing, is what I mean, so.
That's great because we want this to be collaborative process. I, none of us want you to feel like you're in the hot seat or it's all dependent upon you, which makes me ponder the question, do we want to have an arrangement like we had Donna Hutton really stepped up this year with regard to homework?
Yeah.
Is that a good framework for this topic, you know, for next year in terms of engaging parents and staff into the discussion? Is that, are you both sort of feeling like it would be, you know, yes, we could have a pilot program hopefully, not promising, but hopefully that's the goal? And then do you want to sort of look at that framework for engagement and discussion in the community? That might be an important component. I'm thinking out loud here, so.
Yeah, I think that, right. I think to get that long-term commitment to it, I think it's, it's good to...
It has to be a buy-in, right? It has to be a value of our community. Because that's when it sort of floats to the top and, you know, we figure out ways because everyone's working for the same goals. And when you're just doing it in isolation, it's tricky, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, to interrupt you, Marty.
No, no, I agree. I think, I think trying to, and I think we're starting to see that, we're starting to, that's kind of gelling, you know. Everywhere I turn, I hear about the importance of activity for kids and whether it's one of our special programs committee speakers or Sue's wellness committee or PTO meetings or...
Yeah, the speaker who came, who was that?
I think every speaker just about talked about Jessica Leahy.
Jessica Leahy? Yep, that was good.
It seems that each spoke about the importance of activity for kids and, yeah.
Yes.
So I think, I mean, typically by the end of May, I think you have schedules pinned down for the following year, is that fair to say, or June?
I mean, MCAS ends on the 18th, so it's just, let's make reasonable...
It's skeleton.
I mean, I, we will work at this for sure. I just think it's going to, it might take a little...
Maybe June.
Yeah. Be a little bit better, right, yeah.
What about, is physical education, are they able to access outdoors for that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Because my girls say that they go outside sometimes, so I think that's great if it's encouraged to...
If you drive by, you'll see all the goals and Mr. Leahy in the morning setting up, picking up and...
If it's nice out.
That's great. That's a biggie, I feel like. That's an easy, low hanging fruit grab is if we can, if it works into the curriculum, you know.
And we have classes that go outside as well.
Great.
So.
And then maybe utilizing that courtyard.
Yes.
Like what we can do to help facilitate that from a funding...
And we started a dialogue with my pack and they are...
Oh, great.
We're starting the conversation, they're looking at, looking at ways to come up with a formulated plan, low maintenance, how to really, what can we get out of our, this space to utilize it more efficiently? We have a lot of enthusiastic parents, which is, which is great and exciting and they're really going to run with it.
Oh, good.
So looking forward to seeing what they, what we all can come up with.
Good.
Yeah.
Because Superintendent O'Shea and I did have a discussion about it and I think you pointed out something important, that putting time and effort into that courtyard, not only would it help with outdoor access, but it's really, you said, it's really the center of that school. And I think it would be, go a long way to that quality of life in that school when you're walking by those windows.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's great. I'm excited to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the parents at home who are watching and who are involved in that and volunteering their time. Michelle?
I have something unrelated to middle school recess, so I don't know, before we close out the wellness discussion, I guess, can we...
Yeah, do you, if we're all set with Taylor and...
Yeah, Nicole. Thank you. So much for coming tonight.
Thank you for having us, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks for all your hard work and logging your evening times with us.
So the only other piece that I wanted to ask about, and I noticed it in Sue's draft report, was the high school, you know, trying to get them not necessarily recess, but more outside time, access to outdoors, like during lunch or something. So is that...
They have access during lunch now.
All of them or just the seniors?
Yes, I thought it was maybe just the seniors, but I reconsidered. Everybody, they are welcome to use the outside.
Awesome, okay.
You know, so they're, I think hopefully comes free. I think they might need some encouragement to get out there. I'm not sure why.
Okay.
Because they all have their spots they want to sit in and they have their brown bag lunches and they don't want to, God forbid, you know, have to sit with someone that they didn't plan on sitting with, so there's that, but...
And then like what about during study hall and stuff? Are they able to, if it's a nice day, go outside and work or is there outdoor areas?
That I don't, I can't answer that, I don't know. I think they can use some of library access out, that way if they'd like to, but...
Is that where the tables are situated outside, near the library?
Up on the terrace.
Up on the terrace there, yeah.
That's the library.
Yes.
And outside cafeteria also.
Yeah.
Ice blocks.
Ice blocks, some do and some don't. It depends on.
Yeah, and they have a lot of opportunity. They can go, one of many places for ice blocks, so they're not forced into a classroom and desk and ice block.
Right.
They can throw themselves on the furniture and the open spaces. I mean, we have to walk through and see them like laying across studying. They're, they're working, but they're not pigeonholed into a desk and none of them choose that.
Yeah.
They're in the cafeteria or they're in the open spaces or they're, you know, in a lab or meeting with a teacher, so.
Awesome.
It's not the kinda, it's not what we had to endure, you know, we're writing notes to our friends.
So I guess that's just the last piece, I wanted to see if we were focusing on other ways to, you know, get them outside if they need it.
And the high, well, and the high school really is, has bought into movement.
Encourage it, okay. Good, okay. Thank you.
Stephanie?
I have a question about that. Back to the elementary, was there any talk about how it's gone from, they used to have two recesses and now they have one recess for 45 minutes, is there recess and lunch? How that transition went, what?
Well, because the, one of the principals is new, didn't really have a history of why that transition, but that principle, obviously, they do have before lunch recess at that building, right?
So Center, I can speak for Center School went from two to one recess, so they have one recess that's 45 with lunch. They used to have two, kindergarten used to have three, I don't know what they have now. But I was wondering if there was any data, any?
It was just scheduled for scheduling reasons.
I feel like it started with that wind block, like, cause I know it's the two to one.
Just trying to get everything into that one day, you know, that one day.
Well, they extended the lunch, so it's the same time allotment, I believe, they extended it. So it's a 45 minute, but instead of breaking it up, they did it all at once.
Right.
And I was wondering, you know, for the younger kids, how that's panned out, waiting for that break at lunch or if there was any data on that? Cause it was just rolled out and boom, it was there. But I was wondering how that.
We've kicked, we've talked about it with the lunch principles and the discrepancies and what seems to work and what doesn't. And it all revolves around scheduling, so I know they are really trying to get recess before lunch next year, adding another chunk in, I'm not sure.
Who's trying to get recess before lunch? The other two elementary principals?
Everybody is looking at that.
That's great. I saw that on your list.
They used to have a morning recess and then they got rid of it. So it's not a matter, the question about switching from recess before lunch, it's what happened to the morning?
The kindergartners still do have a morning recess.
Yeah, but the other kids used to and then it went away. And I'm wondering if there's any data to show, cause for some of those kids, that's a long time to wait, you know, from 8:30 to 12 for that outside time. And it was rolled out, you know, just boom. And I'm wondering if there's data to show whether it's been helpful, has there been an uptick in kids meeting breaks or, you know?
That's a good question, yeah. I don't think there's any data that anyone's taken, you know, on designs, but it was done for scheduling reasons and trying to get larger chunks of time for academics and that is the story across the country, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I wish I could be more helpful to your question, but maybe we can try and get an answer for your next meeting or in-between meetings.
I think it would be helpful because if you all of a sudden, if you get even qualitative data from the teachers, if you have an uptick and they're saying, you know, this is a long time and yeah, I do have to take a break no matter what, but then those kids aren't getting that outside time and, yeah, how that has, has panned out, I think is helpful.
Well, the other component to look at too is the length of that recess. And behavioral issues with the length, all of a sudden having a long recess is something to look at also. Liz?
I was just gonna say that although they do have that long recess and now it's only one, I'm sure that the teachers are incorporating all that movement in the classroom to make up for that morning recess that they lost.
It's just not outside, like it.
Right.
Yeah, and I think the part that's not, the teachers, that doesn't have anything to do with the teachers, is the intensity of curriculum and testing that's evolved over the past five to 10 years in schools is just such an issue. That schools are becoming these pressure cookers and how do we offset that? It's complicated, you know? But it's been a theme for our committee this year and I hope to continue with it, but.
Well, some of the research shows that if you, say you had a 60-minute math class and you took seven of those minutes to do some kind of movement break, that your scores are going to increase more than how you spend those seven minutes on math instruction.
Cramming.
Yeah, so it's pretty interesting. You know, but it's a lot about education and educating staff and, you know, they need to see results.
But I think in the context of this, it's worth looking at, you know, are you better off with that larger chunk or are you better off with the two split or, you know, both of them?
And I really wanna know, to connect to you about what teachers are seeing with behavior on the playground with regard to the length of time for recess. I, because I'm hearing a lot about that on the street, so to speak. And I just lost my train of thought, but.
I'll sign off.
What were you just? Michelle, were you all set?
I was, thank you.
Okay. I hope that we can make progress with the recess before lunch, cause I think it's a biggie. It would be fantastic. Sue?
Yeah, well, it's been a simmering discussion, we'll see where they are with it.
Yeah, they didn't feel like they could change it this year, but I know that they were thinking, talking about what we need to have.
When's your next meeting for wellness, are you getting together again?
Yeah. It's soon. I'll find it for you.
And Sue, I think in terms of who we have on our, in the playgrounds in terms of money and funding, do we need to look at that for budgeting purposes? This is a rhetorical question.
Yes.
For next year.
I mean, I'm saying if we're recommending, you know.
I just wanna keep that on the radar.
Recession at the middle school, they're going to have trouble finding supervision.
Right.
And I think volunteers are great, but these are middle school kids who, you know, who are better when somebody knows them, you know, knows which kind of groups to watch and where there might be, you know, something happening. And so it's tough to have a volunteer come in, they don't know them as well as our teachers know them.
Right, and then the uptick in sort of those social emotional issues that are brewing the lower levels, you know, and staffing, some kind of coverage for recess, I think it's sort of starting to just simmer to the top, you know, you hear more and more about it. It's fascinating, so, again.
They've been, you know, they've been inside a long time, it's been a long winter, so.
Yeah, I just, you know, I really want recess to go well. And I know that there's a lot of, you know, right, and, you know, is this right or should they be left to their own, you know, should there be supervision, should they be guided? I know there's a whole lot of philosophy back and forth.
Probably they should have a choice in facilitated activity or?
Yeah, or somewhere in, anywhere on the spectrum in between. I just want it to go well and I want parents and staff and students to feel good about their recess experience, not just throwing the kids outside, you know, so I want it to be a thoughtful process too. And the reason I brought it up was because of the funding and advocating for, you know, the question mark of do we need to advocate for funding there? I just think it's something to keep our, our eye on. Tom, don't look at me like that. He's giving me dirty looks across the table. Stephanie?
I know, I always look at the advisory time as this little golden nugget that I wanna, you know, there's so many opportunities there. Was that something that was looked at as a time to drive the recess during advisory?
At the elementary level?
At the middle.
That's, that's part of the equation for them for next year.
Within the whole block of advisory or, I heard we were shaving off time of advisory, but actually the advisory teacher holding the recess with the kids?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's yes and yes, so it would potentially, you know, again, it's sort of the balloon you push in one side, it's gotta come out the other way. So if you, if you potentially could take some time off of advisory or you could potentially involve the advisory teachers.
Like using, I'm talking about, like using advisory as an opportunity to go outside and use that as a recess time. Only because recess incorporates so many of those social skills and the social emotional wellness that we're talking about and we're worried about what recess is going to look like.
Right.
It might be, if we're gonna do a pilot, a time to do it within advisory with a teacher. That was my thought.
Right.
To see how it goes.
Do adjustment counselors play any sort of role in the recess or outdoor activity with, like with that connection between?
Elementary, they do. It won't swamp, I believe, but I'm not sure, at all the places, all the schools.
They also do separate play groups or, you know, game groups and things like that to teach those kinds of turn-taking.
Social groups.
Social groups, yeah.
Social skill development, yeah, so they would be a voice in that discussion, no doubt.
So they may, yeah, not during recess, I believe, they let the kids play during recess, they may go out and watch or have a duty during recess and they, you know, can see their kids practicing or they might give some guidance on, you know, practicing social skills, but they love.
And I, and I think it's important to note that I think your interest in having, giving students more opportunities to move and be active and not seat bound, I think our educators share that. I don't think that, that is not something that people are resistant to, it's just a matter of trying to find the time in the instructional day because they're, as much as they hear, well, recess is important, they hear music's important, science is important, math is important, and English is important, and advisory is important, and all those things are important. So it's about how do you, how do you balance a lot of legitimate, good competing needs, you know, so that's the.
But then you have to look at the history too, and I don't wanna start a huge discussion, but if we're, if it started with a wind block scheduling, I don't know, maybe that's a discussion we really need to have as a committee in terms of, you know, the shift with recess. What happened? I just don't know what happened, so. Stephanie?
There's also that kind of elephant in the room about extending the day. And there was an interesting, at one of the talks a while ago, a woman, I think she was from Canada, was talking about their day and what she had come from and her experience with the extended day but lots of breaks and how different it is and that the kids were moving and having lots of breaks, but the day was longer. And I think it's just interesting in terms of the wellness committee is thinking about that, what do you gain by extending it a little bit longer so that you can have breaks rather than the kids sitting and, just something to think about and look at. Well, right, it's contracts, but I think when you're talking about this holistically, I think you have to look at what, what are other countries doing, what are other people doing, what does their data show? And one of them is those breaks and then we have this regulation in Massachusetts with how many hours and time minutes you have to spend on learning that you're trying to get at. So it is difficult, it is a balancing act and, you know, do you cram it all in and have them sitting or do you extend it out and have them taking breaks and do you get more from that and are the kids happier? It's just worth, I think, looking at.
Anything else before we move on to administrative reports? Thank you, Stephanie. First on the agenda, we have superintendent's report.
All right, so you have a copy of my written report in your packet. I'll be brief. Summer enrichment is up and running, there's an online portal to register and pay for those courses, lots of offerings stretching throughout the whole summer. Stacy Smith did a nice job of putting together a great program. We mentioned homework, that will be on your May 23rd agenda. There's a blurb about recess and movement, we'll get back into that. I will mention, would be remiss if I didn't mention the recent news coverage of a former Glenbrook teacher and I just wanna reiterate our, the importance we place on student safety, it is our highest priority. And in that case, in all cases, we are always willing to involve outside agencies, public safety, legal counsel, well, there agencies, et cetera. So that was the case in that situation and it will always be the case in Long Meadow Public Schools. And if anyone has questions on that, I'm certainly available. May 1st, we have a presentation at the Long Meadow High Auditorium, A Shot of Reality, a discussion of underage drinking in Long Meadow. Thanks to Shelley Warren for pulling that together, working with officers from Long Meadow Police Department. It will be presentation and a Q and A session to follow and it's, it's timely as we approach graduation season. And then finally, the.
Is that an annual event?
Uh.
That, uh?
In one way, shape or form, I think it's become an annual event where we try to do some community engagement around teenage drinking as we approach prom and graduation season, so. And then finally, the Blueberry Hill Principal Search is still underway. We have the period during which applicants could apply is closed and the screening committee will be convened shortly to screen applicants to be interviewed. So we're excited to get that process reactivated.
Do we have any other reports tonight from the collaborative, legislative, SEAL, Food Services or Energy Task Force?
Meeting tomorrow.
Okay.
Collaborative.
For collaborative? So next agenda, any, anyone else have upcoming, upcoming meetings? Michael, you were gonna say something.
I have a legislative update.
Okay, you have an update. Okay, go ahead.
Well, just this week, the House of Representatives is doing their budget. They added $20 million to their budget yesterday, I don't know how much they added today. My guess is a lot of that's earmarks, but not too sure where they're gonna come down on Chapter 70. Certainly have an update at the next meeting on that. Senate's preparing to get ready for their budget at the end of May, the last full week in May. Similar information will be communicated at that, at that time. And today was the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Day on the Hill. I know that several local committees were down there, I know ours wasn't, and that's okay. But a good opportunity for MASC members to lobby their legislators on a number of issues, including the foundation budget and fully funding it. Obviously, we're not gonna do that this year, just given how tight the budget is, but certainly I'm sure they're out there advocating for the Fair Share Amendment. Additionally, advocating for increasing Chapter 70, which I guess kinda goes hand in hand with foundation budget. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Jess, we have a food service meeting on Thursday at 12 o'clock.
Okay. Thanks, Michelle. Finance Subcommittee does not have an update tonight. Nothing new has popped up. Okay. Under new business, we have school choice, if somebody can make the motion and then we can have a discussion. Michael?
Sure.
Well, I thought you were raising your hand.
No, I was just kinda moving around.
All right, well.
It's fine.
Movement is good.
I move, we just learned a lot about it. I move on the recommendation of the superintendent that the school committee accept an additional student in sixth, in grade six through the school choice program for the 2017-18 school year.
Second.
Discussion.
Explanation?
That'd be great, thanks.
So we had applications from two families with siblings already in Long Meadow Public Schools and so there was only one seat available. And so we thought that it would make sense to open up a, another seat at the sixth grade level and that would avoid us having to have a sort of lottery for a family who's already involved with Long Meadow Public Schools.
Any questions or discussions, discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the superintendent's evaluation process.
Okay, so this, this doesn't require any action by the school committee, but it's more to, I guess, prep you for the evaluation that you'll have to conduct on me. And so I guess being familiar with the framework and the tool, I thought I'd just take this opportunity to kinda let you know what is in store. So this, this approach to educator evaluation is the approach that all educators are subject to, whether classroom teacher, superintendent. And so they'll be, you'll receive this form via email from Diane or I in the next day or so. And there are a couple of steps involved in completing the evaluation. And so the first step is assessing the progress that I've made towards the goals that I've identified. So at your last meeting, I provided you with an update on my progress towards meeting the professional practice, student learning and district improvement plan goals. So you have that already, we can resend it if you need it. So you'll be asked to kind of assess the progress that I've made on those goals. And when you get the packet, I'll, I'm gonna come back up shortly, when you receive the packet, you'll see this page here. This is a narrative with the goals already in there and so you can just refer to that and evaluate whether I did not meet, made some progress, significant progress, met or exceeded. And so that's sort of step one is evaluating the progress that I've made on the goals. The second step relates to assessing my performance on the leadership standards that the Department of Education has put together. There are four standards. Each standard has five or six indicators, each indicator has a boatload of elements to it, it's pretty involved, but you'll need to assess my progress or my performance in each of those four standards. And you'll notice to do that, you'll just have to go to page five, page 11, page 16 and page 20. So there's a, there's a rubric that will take you through it and will help you determine if my, you know, my performance level in each of those standards. So that's the second step. And then once you're done with that, you would need to then complete the third and most important step here, which is the overall, oops, the overall summative rating. This is what gets reported, I believe, to the Department of Education. This is what gets reported, I believe, to the Department of Education. This is kind of the bottom line performance rating. Unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, or exemplary. And those terms are defined in the document that you'll receive. So that's step three. You'll notice that there's a step four here, rate impact on student learning. And this is no longer part of the evaluation framework. Educators are not being evaluated. That's not being reported to the Department of Education. And so, you know, on the other hand, you're welcome to fill it out, I suppose. This is not, you know, you're not bound by law. This is just simply regulation. So step four is grade out. If you, as a committee, wanted to evaluate that, you could. As we have seen with classroom teachers, there's a lot of complication in terms of assessing, you know, performance relative to student learning. And then, if you choose to, you can add comments in the box that's provided there. Your individual evaluations are public documents. The process that Jess and I have talked about is, once you've completed your individual evaluations, you would submit them to Diane and Jess. Diane will compile the paperwork electronically or hard copy, and then Jess would kind of do an averaging process, I guess. I mean, I don't know. That's, we're the committee to figure out how you take those individual evaluations and come up with one single evaluation. So you'll have to complete an individual evaluation using the documents I sent, that Diana and I sent. And the timeline for that, your final meeting as a committee is May 23rd, because your next meeting after that, it'll be a newly constituted committee. So your last meeting is May 23rd. So I think the thought was to, and I'm flexible in this, obviously, but the thought was to try to wrap up that evaluation before a new committee gets seated. But I'm making the assumption that you would want to do that. So that's May 20, it would have to be at your May 23rd meeting when the evaluation, summative evaluation gets publicly reported out. It has to be done in a public meeting. So it's complicated.
Russ?
There's more to it, but yeah.
So what were you thinking? We get the evaluation document like a couple of weeks in advance?
So I thought we would send you the evaluation document as early as tomorrow, and then you could set a deadline to get it to Jess. Jess would compile the individual evaluations and come up with a consensus, I want to guess.
Okay, I think we talked about this last year or two.
Yeah.
But, so MASC recommends that, well, they say the chair can do the compilation. The Attorney General's Office recommends that you not have the chair do it, that you have Diane do it essentially, because of open meeting law issues. Because if you've got everything in advance and there's any communication at all, then there's-
Okay.
So they recommend that it actually not go to the chair. It's just a recommendation. They don't say it's illegal, but-
So is that just for, that's just for compilation? Just to compile?
Well, what they say is that the committee should not be sending their own evaluations to each other at all or to the chair. It should actually all go to Diane. Diane compiles it, and then we get the compilation. And you keep all the individual ones, and they are public record if somebody wanted them. So we could find out how everybody rated, you know, the superintendent. MASC, I've been to their trainings, and they say you can have the chair do it. But I know the AG's office recommends that you not do that. So it's up to the committee to decide how to do it, but it's, those are the two different pieces of advice that are out there.
Michelle?
I'd like to err on the side of caution and have Diane do it, if that's okay, just so we don't have anything questionable on our track record.
Well, how, so how have you done it in-
Last year, we had Diane do it.
Past years. And with, so how does it work in terms of compiling the written dialogue part? Does she just include everybody's comments? Oh, okay, so it's not like being condensed or abbreviated. Everyone's comments go into the final document?
She's just the one that compiles.
Got it.
I actually-
Got it.
When you emailed them to me, if you emailed them to me-
Okay.
I copied and pasted them and said-
Okay. That's easy.
Mr. Dupree said this.
I got it.
John handwrote his. I actually typed them in.
Okay.
So.
Okay, yep.
And then, how, from that process, if Diane compiles, from there, how would you finalize it, get the final evaluation?
I think we just put it in the packet and then discuss it.
Well, the final rating, the one-
Oh, how you average. She did that?
Is it an averaging process or-
Yeah. I think Diane took care of all that, and then we received that compiled report, each of us, as part of our packet.
The only thing I've ever seen come up with this is sometimes, let's say somebody puts in an actual complaint about you, not, not, you know, your performance in this area didn't meet my expectations, but something like, on X state, I saw the superintendent do this. I didn't think it was appropriate. I've seen that happen sometimes. That's the only thing where Diane, if you've got something like that, you'd want to talk to council and say, listen, can I include this in a public document? Because technically, you're not supposed to do that in open meeting. I don't see that happening, but that's the only issue I've ever seen.
Would, another option, maybe, or maybe not, it would be to have a subcommittee meet sometime between now and May 23rd, or is that, add a layer of, is that complicated for the-
I mean, I think if we just do what we did last year with Diane, I know it's more work.
Well, that's the only question, is how, I don't know how much work that's adding to your plate and whether it was manageable, what your experience is with it, because I don't want you to be sitting over there silent and-
No, it was manageable, and I did, it was fine.
Okay. I mean, is there anything that we-
The will of the committee. I just, I don't want to sway you any way. Do you make your decision, and I'll make it happen.
We won't let you sway us.
No, I mean, if that's what you, I will just, it's part of the job, so don't worry about it. I'm fine.
How about this question? How long did it take you? Maybe actually-
I honestly don't recall that it was that bad.
Point.
There was, Marty and I had spoken about when you do yours, your, when you get the document, all the rubric part, in his experience, they, you've always used it as a worksheet that adds to the reason you rate him, rate in certain areas, proficient, exemplary. Last year, you actually went through all of that rubric and scored every little thing. I don't, I agree with Marty. I don't think you need to do that.
So you're going to get, you're going to get like a 30-page, maybe more, it might be 50 pages, and really, the first three pages-
Is all that you really need to do.
Right.
With your comments.
The remaining pages could be your own sort of, your own-
I know, now I'm telling you this. I know, and you're-
That could be your own-
No.
Torture.
It was like chewing a piece of soup.
That could be your own workbook kind of thing.
I think we should grieve this.
Could they put their comments in a form, a Google form, and that way, they would already be at?
They can, well, they could, because-
Yeah, so you can copy and paste the entire-
Yeah, they just can't see each other's comments.
Really, couldn't be, they won't be able to.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, you could probably do the whole thing, I bet you, on a Google form, even the rating.
And then it could do the calculations for you.
Isn't there a meeting missing here? I agree with what Russ said about going to, giving it to Diane. We did that last year. But there was a point where we had the forms, we sat down and evaluated the superintendent, and then we read the evaluations.
Yeah, you'll do that on the 23rd.
We're going to do that on the 23rd?
That's what happened. I compiled it, and then I gave it all back to you, and you actually went and read your comments, if you chose to.
No, after we do that, isn't that when you compile the averaging, you know?
No, it was already, it was already done prior. It was already done prior, prior to.
But in that discussion, so sometimes what happens in that discussion, though, is we could all talk, and somebody could change their score and say, well, listen, you've convinced me that mine should have been a five. And so, so it could change that day, but Diane's right that she calculated it first. We got it, we talked about it in the meeting, and nobody changed their score in that meeting, but-
But if you had, it could have happened.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, there's seven people. What if we had six proficient and one unsatisfactory? And we could use mean, median or mode? That's clearly, you know, someone's really off base.
Yeah.
Are we talking about the same person?
But we could talk about that in the meeting.
To be fair to the person being evaluated, you know, if you've got someone who's got a vendetta, I'm not saying anyone here is, but certainly, we should observe that there's five, six votes for one position and one way off the track.
Well, it was like an average. So if you have, there was a point system associated with proficient, so, you know, let's say that's worth three points, and the unsatisfactory was worth zero, the average of all of that still comes out to be more or less proficient.
But we could talk about it in the meeting, because if somebody did rate totally differently, they're probably going to break it up. We could talk to the person.
I'm wondering, how many more meetings have we got? Just two, right?
Well, the week of town meeting, are we having a meeting?
We had a meeting scheduled that Tuesday.
Right.
Town meeting is scheduled Tuesday and Wednesday, so it had to come off.
Yeah, your next meeting is May 23rd.
After this?
No.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
And that's also our last meeting.
And that's also your last meeting.
Of this constituency board.
Correct.
What day's the last meeting on?
Last? Wow.
May 23rd.
As it currently stands, I mean, that's, you know, that's-
We don't want to have just one more, just for good old times.
When's the election?
When's town elections?
June 13th.
Should we meet that Monday?
11th or June 13th?
Don't we have a meeting on June 13th?
It's been moved to June 14th.
Oh, yeah.
To review.
I didn't know that either.
June 13th is now 14th.
Oh. I guess we better change that.
Wow.
It's still at six.
We only have two meetings left?
One.
One meeting? We have one meeting?
We're not going to meet on the, is there a reason we're not meeting on the 6th of
We, I think because that's a off week.
Well, it would be an off week normally. If you wanted a meeting, you could have one.
Well, we have the 23rd meeting, and then we're going to go-
To the 14th.
Three weeks.
The next one was supposed to be June 13th.
So it's three weeks after that.
There's not going to be a lot to talk about in that time period anyway, from what I recall last year. One of the slow periods.
Yeah. Well, it'd be only if you wanted more time for the email, I think, but I think we haven't. Now that it's three pages.
Just send us the three pages.
I'll send you the whole document.
No. I don't want to see.
Start of the three.
No.
Make them a different color. Can you email them in a different color?
Yes, yes, I will.
That is really helpful.
I agree with- They want the rubric in a different color so they know they don't have to-
We'll send that as two separate documents.
That would be good.
The essential and then the rubric, the supporting rubric.
That was what I was concerned about when I was looking at your presentation, is being able to follow the document.
Yeah, it's-
And it looks dense. I mean, from what I've seen, it looks dense.
The only, the only caveat I'd give is, if you're giving somebody a poor rating, you probably should put some explanation in that other, the backup area, so that you have an idea of why you're getting a poor rating.
It's fair.
But if it's proficient, exemplary, then Marty probably doesn't need to know.
He doesn't need any more information. Do you, do you want to conclude? Yeah, do you have some-
So, no, I have nothing else. I mean, I think the only thing would be, do you want to set a date by which the individual committee member should send to Diane?
Well, how much time do you want Diane? I mean, is two weeks a manageable time period?
So we're-
Prior?
On the 23rd, so you're going to want it in your packet the week before.
They got it to you, May 12th. Would that be, would that give you enough time?
Well, that's more than, yeah, that's plenty of time.
Yeah, that's the Friday, right?
It's plenty of time to compile it.
Okay.
May 12th.
And that would give us over two weeks, more than two weeks, to complete. And is that reasonable from a school committee standpoint in terms of accomplishing that task?
Especially now that it's three pages.
Now that it's-
Absolutely.
Getting reduced. Okay. Thank you, Diane, for-
Thank you.
Taking this on. I really appreciate it.
That's it? Good.
I thought you were going to say something.
Nope.
All right, next we have, a request was made by committee member to discuss the seating arrangement for town committees at town meetings.
On behalf of the star-
I didn't, I'm sorry I didn't even ask you before, but I assumed you didn't want to.
No, I had just brought this up at the beginning of the year, and I was just asking why the committee was sitting up there. I think at that time, when we brought it up, you know, I heard some, some reasoning. And it's in no way because I questioned it because I am looking to sit in the audience or hide. I think anybody who knows my participation in town meeting knows quite well that I'm not looking to hide.
You have a history of participation in town meetings.
I don't even know what you're talking about. What I'm actually looking more for is information on what our role is in the front. So, you know, oftentimes, when there is a dispute in the budget or a concern, it's a matter of asking a parent to come up and make a motion or something. So my questioning is more along the lines of, I understand that it's been practiced for a really long time, but what is our role? What are we entitled to up there? What can we do? And so, you know-
Because now we have to go to the microphone on the floor.
Yeah. And if you, and so we sit up there, in many ways, it shows your support of a budget that, or warrant items, or whatever, that you may or may not agree with. And so what is our role up there? Is it just to show people how we vote? Or do we have an active, ability to be more active in the process, or was really-
Well, historically, it was, there have been splits on the school committee with respect to the budget that was sent forward. So it was to allow people to dissent in public or repeat their dissent with respect to the school budget. And we've had debates and attempts to amend the budget.
You mean discussion among the school committee in front-
At that town meeting. For example, you once proposed increasing the, the school budget.
Yes, but I wasn't on the committee, but yeah.
Just like that as an example, not to make a big deal out of it. But that was one example. And there was then discourse back and forth between members of the school committee as to how they felt about that and the select board. But so, that was the reason, the other response, we're the responsible body. I guess you could argue, but once we're done, we could leave. That's what happens with the administrative personnel. After the school budget's been taken care of, you guys get to go home. But for the most part, we used to stay. Sort of out of good citizenship, because we didn't want people filing out of the hall. You'll find that people file out of the hall after their issue, what brought them out has been discussed. And that, of course, also took place with school budgets. When we packed the house with people who were concerned about school, and we didn't pack it, but I mean, the issue packed the house. You could see a massive exodus, and it sort of betrayed the purpose of a town meeting to vote on everything. That's what I know about it.
So when you talk about administrators, that's another question. So people who are out of town, you're able to sit. Where do you sit? What kind of role can you play at town meeting when you're not from town but part of the school and you're there for the budget?
They're allowed to testify on a technical matter, a specific number.
They sit in the very front row in front of us.
Yeah.
And the superintendent can speak on the budget, regardless where he lives.
Which I'm planning on-
So you're going to give a presentation?
That was my, that was my intention, and I'm hoping to suggestions and direction on that.
The same presentation that you did at the meeting?
Some version of it.
My suggestion is brief.
Brief. Brief is good.
Brevity is highly valued.
It can be brief.
Well, did you think, I thought his presentation was quite succinct to the committee. Were you thinking briefer?
I mean, anything at town meeting. That could be shorter, should be shorter.
I think this year, I think brief would be okay.
Yeah.
I don't sense that-
I think historically, though, it's been the chair. The chair speaks on the town floor.
Well, I mean, historically, yeah.
It's just repeating what was said before.
Right.
I remember Marie used to just sit there. I don't think she, she ever got called on to come up.
We, we presented one, she presented one year.
Yes, she did present. I remember her presentation very well. Yeah, she did.
Yeah.
But most places, it's the superintendent. If there was one.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, that a superintendent would be.
I've had the experience where the chair initiates the presentation and turns it over to a superintendent. That's more comfortable.
I'm very comfortable with you speaking at town meetings. I'm good with that. You're a very good public speaker.
Yeah, I'm flexible.
I can't, I can't speak to the origins of it. I mean, obviously, when I was elected, they were sitting up front and they were sitting up front before.
Yeah.
I'll tell you why, why I like it though. You know, and it's not just because you get a good view of like who's doing what out there. I like it because I think that it puts us in a very prominent position where we should be. I mean, we're 70% of the town's budget, we are just as equally elected as the members of the select board, and we do have a role to play outside of the budget, especially when it comes to that $7,000 vending machine account that we, $5,000 this year, $5,000. And there's plenty of issues, including community preservation, warrant articles, capital planning warrant articles, that we are oftentimes asked to speak on, whether it's the chair of the school committee or the chair of finance sub. And I think, you know, for a lot of town residents, they look to us to see what we're doing. And that's not to say that they're looking at like how we vote individually on like a, you know, like some historic preservation issue. But I think when it's a matter, especially a matter related to our budget or something that directly impacts us, you know, a lot of people who come to town meeting are coming because we ask them to come sometimes. And they're not as well educated on the issues as we are or members of the select board are. So they look at what the school committee's doing because they trust our judgment most, most of the time. And I think that that's a valuable thing for us as elected officials, you know, in terms of how we relate to and manage our constituencies. And it's also helpful in building additional coalitions. It's great when the seniors can sit up there and see that we voted in support of their feasibility study. It's great when people who've been working hard on DPW, you know, can see us if we do support it, you know? It buys us a lot in terms of political capital because people can see what we're doing. And, you know, I know that we were kind of all, you know, there was, there was some sentiment that it might be like hiding and I, I don't, I don't think that it is, but I do think that, you know, we, we just have, we have a role to play. And regardless of if it's something that's like in our jurisdiction or not, you're still gonna get asked about it. I mean, how many of you have been asked about senior center or DPW? I know I am, because we're, we're, we're thought leaders and decision makers and that's a valuable thing. And I think it's important that we're prominently there because we do have a role to play in town governance.
I do, I do want to throw into the conversation the fact that I believe this is the first night Long Meadows ever done or conducted a two-night town meeting. And my understanding is that the budget, the school budget will, will be on the first evening.
Yeah.
So then that always begs the question of our role the second evening and what the committee, I am absolutely 100% fine with whatever the committee wants to do in terms of seating, it's up to you all. But I think it's worth, it's worthy of a discussion since it's a new approach this year. So I wanted to throw that in.
Yeah, I mean, I think I always look at what's the purpose, why are we there? I think it makes sense to me, what was not making sense to me is for us to sit up there but not speak about our budget. What makes sense to me is if somebody's gonna speak about our budget, then we're up there to defend it and, and that makes sense when people have questions. But to just sit up there and fall under the select board just didn't make sense to me. So this sort of arrangement makes much more sense to me and then people have questions and obviously, they can come up and you're there to speak. That'll make sense. And so my question too is, yeah, what can we do? What can't we do? If we have questions, you go to the podium. If you have questions about the warrant articles, you go around.
Right.
Just like a citizen, but if people do have questions about the budget, you are already up there. Now, not all towns, and I don't think many towns have their school committees up front. So it is somewhat a unique thing, so anytime I do something, I like to know why I'm doing it and what the purpose is and if you can make it better, if you can make your, you know, something more effective and helpful.
Well, if I could, there's another board that sits up there, that's the finance.
Finance.
Well, it's their meeting.
It is their meeting.
You know, the chief and the police chief, fire chief, all sit up front in case they're called upon.
Yeah.
DPW chief. There have been issues that came up later in the, in the budget hearing. Community preservation grants, which involves school, probably, I think it was planting grass on center school court. And that was a contentious issue, so...
And honestly, we'll be...
There was some reason for school committee people to stand there and talk or rise up to defend that in support of what the community preservation people did. So there are questions that come up later that have school content.
So John, what you're, what you're saying is that if I, if I could be so bold as to just make this clear, you, you think the school committee should sit in front both nights for the entirety of the meeting?
I think it's your responsibility. That's my, that's my take on it.
What does everyone else think? Russ? Sorry, I didn't see you.
Yeah, I would agree. Because I don't think, I think it's too difficult to figure out when we don't have any role in any of the warrant articles versus potentially having some role, so I'd rather just leave it the way it is.
Michael?
I also think there's like a logistical issue, right? So if the school committee, I mean, we, we actually get to sit together and it's, it's an open meeting and we can deliberate to a certain extent. And so if there's something we need Jess to speak to, like if all of us are spread out throughout the meeting, like how can we get her attention and be like, "Yeah, you should do that?" Or how can we do like sidebar and decide what she's, you know, and give her some advice on what to say or, you know, flesh it out?
You can say, I'm good.
Fine, I'm happy to. So I think, you know, like there's, there's like logistical strategy and, you know, we need to remember that this budget year might have been like very simple and, not simple, but, you know, in terms of like the politics, simple.
Smooth.
And, but in previous years, it's been anything but, and we've needed to be like a coalition, we've needed to be visible and seen. And I think, you know, you make a good point in the last thing you said, because I think your first experience as a school committee member at town meeting was at a special, like fall town meeting or special town meeting, where we don't really have as much of a defined role. But this year, especially with not only budget, capital, CPC, but now warrant article 14 on our technology purchases, like I think we're gonna be getting questions. So I, I think we, we sit up front and hey, you know, I got one meeting left, so after that, you're free to make whatever decision you want.
So that's listed as a meeting so that we can deliberate during it?
I have never posted it for you to attend town meetings, so that, your, your whole talk right now, I'm like, hmm, okay.
That's what I've been told.
I don't think probably should.
I mean, you probably, in other towns...
I don't know if I should be posting it as a town meeting if you're...
It's a public meeting, you know, and...
But it's not a posted school committee town meeting.
Right.
So if you're deliberating, it's somehow that should be posted.
Well, we certainly have been...
There's a ruling on that topic, I just, I don't want to say definitively, 'cause I'm having trouble remembering what it said. I think it was that a town meeting is considered a public meeting that's posted and you actually can deliberate, because I had a committee once...
That makes sense.
Come off the stage...
So you don't have to separate it, post.
So there, I don't need to do a separate one?
But I'm not positive about that.
That actually makes sense.
We could check, but it's, it's a well-known decision, I just can't remember for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I know I'd heard it somewhere. If it would make everybody more comfortable, we could always ask council, you know, just to weigh in real quick on whether we should post or not post.
We could call the AG's office and ask them for...
That's a, that's a route you don't want to go down.